Okay, good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, June the 10th. The time is 9:30 a.m. I'd like to call to order our meeting this morning. So Erica, if you can do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Henson.
Here. Commissioner Pinter.
Here.
Commissioner Baca. Here. So if everyone can please stand and join me in the, join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, individual liberty and justice for all.
I would like a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. And the motion passes, uh, three with two absent. So the next item on our agenda is the selection of chair for the week of June 14th through June 20th.
Chair, I'd like to make a nomination to nominate Kathy Henson as chair for the week, June 14th through June 20th.
Second. You're welcome. Congratulations. What you don't see up here is a little, little sheer panic, but that's okay. You're gonna be fine.
No, I don't.
It's your first year, you can handle it.
It's not, it's not panic.
It's shock. We believe in your leadership.
It's all good.
Six months in, you've got us convinced. You're fantastic. Thank you, commissioners. So, good morning, everyone. Uh, we'll begin this morning by introducing a proclamation recognizing an important observance in our community and one that went far too long and seen by many. So I'm proud to introduce this proclamation recognizing Juneteenth, an observance that marks the end of slavery in the United States and honors the resilience, resilience and achievements of the African-American community. So Juneteenth is a day of deep significance rooted in both pain and perseverance. It's also a celebration of Black history, culture, and joy. As a county, we take this time to reflect on the past, to acknowledge the work still ahead, and to uplift the voices and contributions of Black Americans in our community and beyond. We are honored to recognize Juneteenth and everything it stands for. So with that, I'd like to have Commissioner Pinter read the proclamation.
Thank you, Chair. Juneteenth, 2025, June 19th, 2025. Whereas each year, the United States observes Juneteenth, also known as Emancipation Day, as the oldest known celebration that commemorates the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas the current population of Adams County is approximately 3.5% Black or African-American, and whereas Juneteenth became our newest federal holiday when President Joe Biden signed the Juneteenth National Independence Day Act in 2021, and our newest Adams County holiday when the Board of County Commissioners signed a resolution establishing holidays for 2022, and now celebrated every June. And whereas Juneteenth is a blending of the words June and 19th. It commemorates June 19th, 1865, the day Union Army Major General Gordon Granger rode to Galveston, Texas, and told the slaves of their emancipation. That day came more than two years after President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation on January 1st, 1863. And whereas, Black and African-American people continue their rich history of significance and diverse contributions to the cultural, educational, economic, and political vitality of Adams County. Now therefore be it resolved, the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Adams, the state of Colorado, does hereby proclaim June 19th, 2025 as Juneteenth, and encourages all residents to honor the rich diversity of, of Black and African-American community and remember the many sacrifices that were made for freedom in the United States. This is signed by Julie Germain Melika, Kathy Henson, Emma Pinter, Steve Odricio, and Lynn Baca.
Great. Thank you so much, commissioners. So at this time, I'd like to invite Eric Branton, the Talent Acquisition Manager from our People and Culture Department, up to the podium to speak, and then we'll have a guest speaker and then Commissioner comments. Good morning, Eric.
Good morning. Good morning. Get my glasses off so I can see here. Good morning, commissioners, and good morning, attendees. Today we gather to celebrate a pivotal moment in American history, Juneteenth. This day honors the resilience, strength, and enduring spirit of African-Americans while inviting us to reflect on the struggles that have shaped our nation. Juneteenth represents the moment in 1865 when the news of the Emancipation Proclamation finally reached Galveston, Texas, freeing the last enslaved individuals in the United States. While President Lincoln had declared all slaves free, two and a half years earlier, it took this day for enslaved people in Texas to learn of their freedom. This delayed revelation symbolizes not only the resilience of a people who fought for their liberation, but also societal structures that attempted to uphold oppression. As we celebrate Juneteenth, we recognize that the journey towards true equality and justice is ongoing. Today, we honor our ancestors who endured unimaginable hardship yet never lost hope. Their fight for freedom laid the foundation for subsequent civil rights movements and inspired us to advocate for justice, equality, and opportunity for all. Let us take this moment to educate ourselves and others about the significance of Juneteenth. It stands as a crucial chapter in a larger story of America, a story we must remember, learn from, and strive to improve. The legacy of Juneteenth reminds us that freedom and equality are not historical achievements. They are ongoing goals that demand our commitment and action. As we celebrate with joy, reflection, and community, let's also confront the work that still remains to this day. We share responsibility to challenge inequality wherever it exists, uplift marginalized voices, and ensure that future generations grasp the significance of Juneteenth and what it represents. So as we gather in unity, let us honor the past, embrace the present, and envision a future where freedom, justice, and respect are guaranteed for every individual. May we carry forward the lessons learned from our history and strive to create America that truly reflects the ideals of liberty and justice for all people. Happy Juneteenth, and I thank everybody for your time.
Thank you so much, Eric. Um, at this time, we have Commissioner comments? Or is there a guest? Eric, did you have a guest speaker? You're in. He's in. Okay. Appreciate that. Comments from the board? Commissioner Henson.
Oh, thank you. Yes, thank you, Eric. The, we're, I love the proclamation. Thank you, uh, staff for putting that together for us and Commissioner Pinter for reading it. I'm very proud and pleased that we are acknowledging, uh, Juneteenth, that it is a holiday here in Adams County. Thank you for your words, Eric. I quickly grabbed my pen because something you said, I just want to highlight one of your statements. I believe I got this correct. Justice and equality are not historical. They are things, they're ideals, and necessary elements of our society that we have to stand for every day and renew, and renew our commitment to them every day and work every day to make them part of the fabric of our, the great tapestry of our community. And so I, I don't think I can add anything else to your great words, but thank you so much for, for being here today. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Yes, um, I completely agree, and thank you as well, um, Eric, for sharing your, your thoughts and for all of your efforts to bring those ideals that you identified to our community and to your work here in Adams County. I think, um, maybe it's the being a child of a librarian, but I feel like I, I'm not, it's not lost in me that it was a lack of access to information that caused the delayed emancipation of those in Texas, uh, in Galveston in particular. Um, and I think that in, um, this current moment, access to information, um, needs to be upheld and protected and preserved. And our libraries and access to information are uniquely American idea that everyone has the right to access to the information, to history books, to knowledge books, to learning, um, whether that, um, is written materials or through society or just having a, a space to learn more about your world around you. And I, um, hope that as we move forward, um, these moments in history will be memorialized and recognized and taught and learned from. Because, you know, as, as we say, those who do not learn from history are doomed to repeat it. And I hope that we prioritize, um, freedom of information and civil liberties moving forward as a society.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. Um, you know, I want to thank the board. It was in 2022, I think was the proclamation that we recognized Juneteenth as a holiday. Um, and Commissioner, in the proclamation, it's 160 years this year since the news was spread to Galveston, Texas. We still today have a lot of work to do. Uh, I'll tell you a little story. Uh, one of my commissioners was, uh, cleaning out their office. It is a museum. I'll just say that. And in, in the process of that, there was a brochure that was handed to me and in my lifetime identifies the races specifically out in my adult life from an elected, from an elected office here in Adams County. And being a majority minority county and being elected by the people and to represent them, it changes your heart. If you don't live it already, it will here at Adams County of recognizing every race, every credence, every individual, all their background, socioeconomic, geographically, where do they live? How do they live? Do they have access to food? Do they have all of these things? And as Adams County, I'm so proud to be elected by the people where we make a longer table and we welcome people here and all of their ideas and all their experience and their knowledge, their education that serve alongside of us. And I never want to forget this moment I talked about several months ago of being in a space. Um, I was speaking at a conference of never wanting to forget the moment of taught, being in a space. It happened to be in Washington, DC, um, a very historic hotel, very, uh, colorful, colorful hotel, um, in its history of having it bestowed upon us as elected officials to express and to reach out with respect to others in our community and at large. Um, that is my hope for this county. That is my hope for this country. So with that, thank you, commissioners. I want to thank Eric for being here today. Um, we'd love to invite you down, Eric. We're gonna take a picture along with the, the next proclamation, um, which is our LGBTQ+ Pride Month proclamation. So as we know and observe it today, pride is rooted in radical joy, celebration of identity, and importantly honoring both the brave legacy of activism and continued fight for equality. It's about visibility, dignity, and inherent human right for all people to live and love openly. Pride means different things to everyone. It's a time of reflection, remembrance, celebration of community, resilience, and at times even profound grief. For all of us though, it should stand as a reminder that our county is stronger when everyone feels safe, seen, and supported. We're proud to stand with our LGBTQ+ community and celebrate the courage, history, and hope of Pride Month. So at this time, Commissioner Henson, if you can please read the proclamation.
Yes, thank you, Chair. It's my honor to read the proclamation for Pride Month, June 2025. Whereas Adams County, Colorado proudly acknowledges and designates the month of June 2025 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, celebrating the diversity and contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, questioning, asexual plus individuals throughout our community. And whereas we affirm that all individuals are inherently free and equal in dignity and rights, recognizing the invaluable cultural, civic, and economic impact of LGBTQIA+ individuals in our county, state, and nation. And whereas, while progress toward LGBTQIA+ equality is evident, we reaffirm the crucial need for ongoing education and awareness to eradicate discrimination and prejudice. And whereas, our nation's foundation rests on the fundamental principle of infinite dignity and worth for every person, prompting Adams County to urge our community to embrace this principle and actively combat prejudice in all its forms. And whereas Adams County remains steadfast in our commitment to fostering visibility, dignity, and equality for LGBTQIA+ individuals within our diverse community. And whereas the celebration of Pride Month catalyzes awareness, support, and advocacy, empowering Adams County's LGBTQIA+ community while fostering dialogue, it strengthens alliances, promoting acceptance, and advancing equal rights. And whereas Adams County proudly hosts its fourth annual Adams County Pride Celebration at Riverdale Regional Park on Saturday, June 14th, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of the County of Adams, state of Colorado, proclaimed June 2025 as Pride Month, and calls upon every residence, resident, to embrace diversity, champion equality, and work tirelessly toward a future from discrimination and prejudice for all. Signed by all five Adams County Commissioners.
Thank you so much, commissioners. So at this time, I'd like to invite, uh, our Chief of Staff, Lindsay Milkie, up to the podium to speak.
Good morning, commissioners. Adams County staff and community, thank you for having me this morning. My wife and I got married on July 4th, 2015, uh, reminding me it's my 10-year anniversary, so I'm glad I said that out loud. Um, nine days after the Supreme Court declared same-sex marriage legal in all 50 states. That ruling has had quite an impact on my life. Whether the fact that my marriage is currently recognized across the country, my wife can and is, thank you, Adams County, covered by our healthcare, our home, which we purchased with, with my VA loan, legally belongs to both of us, and we were actually able to use and consider both of our incomes on that VA application. The intangible benefits matter just as much, if not more, actually. After too many years of serving under Don't Ask, Don't Tell, I no longer have to feel like a second-class citizen. I can and do intentionally use the word "wife" when I talk about Julie, and I'm very proud to do so. During an interview in 2015, gay rights activist Craig Schoonmaker shared, "I authored the word pride for gay pride. First thought was gay power. I didn't like that, so proposed gay pride. There's very little chance for people in the world to have power. People did not have power then. Even now, we only have some. But anyone can feel pride in themselves, and that would make them happier as people and produce the movement likely to produce change." In recent days though, unfortunately, I In recent days though, unfortunately, I feel some of my pride slipping away, reverting to shame and reverting to fear. For example, is my son safe given that he has two moms? Are my VA benefits and that home I mentioned, safe? Especially if I continue to self identify and to speak up at times? Am I safe? So each day, I'm doing my best to choose pride over shame and over fear, which is one of the reasons I'm standing here today. I hope that each and every one of us continues to choose to stand with our LGBTQ plus family members, friends and community members so they can continue to be proud of who they are and they and we can feel your pride for who we are as we do nothing more than continue to live our authentic lives. Thank you. Happy Pride Month.
Thank you so much, Lindsay. At this time, any Commissioners like make a comment?
Sure.
Yeah, you want to go?
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Lindsay, for speaking and thank you for sharing your powerful words and your very personal story with us. Discrimination against any one group in our community, particularly the LGBTQIA plus community, denigrates and damages our entire community and our society and our economy. And it's, to me, it's as simple as that, yet it's not simple. But I think the proof is in the pudding. In any marginalized group, we see actively engaging in our community and wanting to take part and owning businesses and speaking up and having families and buying homes. It strengthens, I'm going to go back to my tapestry analogy. It strengthens the fabric of our community. And I'm very proud that in Adams County, we have open arms and we've read two proclamations today, standing up for all members of our community, that we see you and value you and welcome you here in Adams County. Welcoming all members of our community makes us stronger. We know there's a lot of noise out there, particularly about the LGBTQIA plus community. And it is just noise. But it doesn't mean that we can ignore it. And so Pride Month is very important for the people in the LGBTQIA plus community, their allies, their family members, their friends. And again, it's important to the whole community, whether or not people choose to engage in our celebration on Saturday. But I will be there and I'm very excited about it and I look forward to sharing a wonderful day. Thank you, Adams County staff for putting it together and the previous Commissioners for starting that event. Because I've been to it, I think, at least three times now, two for sure. It's wonderful. I look forward to seeing you all there. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Pinter?
Thank you. I really thank you for the efforts of this board and our staff who come together to have these acknowledgements. It's interesting, we had the privilege of hosting with Aurora Economic Development Fortune Feimster, who famously in her first comedic special that was publicized, talked about, it took her a really long time to understand that she was queer and come out as queer because there were no examples of life being lived for her as a young person. And she then, you know, in a famous comedian way had quit, you know, Ellen wasn't out, Rosie wasn't out. We didn't have Will and Grace. There were no examples in media. It wasn't that her identity didn't belong to her, but she didn't feel safe to see it or express it herself. And understanding who you are sometimes takes seeing role models in life and in community. And I'm really proud of this board who has welcomed me and supported me as I have been public and come out as a queer member of this commission. And that we have had Adams County Pride that celebrates community in a way that reflects Adams County and is full of art and music and joy. And I hope that you all come out on Saturday and join us for probably some cotton candy and some local music and some local artists, but also to see and celebrate your neighbors in a friendly and safe way and welcome them and just have some joy and community with your neighbors as we demonstrate once again, everyone who lives here deserves to feel safe here and celebrated.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm just going to highlight what Commissioner Henson had stated and it's all members of our community. And that's why we do these proclamations. It is to make sure that every person in Adams County makes sure that they are seen. We did a proclamation last month. We also hosted a, what I would call a passive event. So there was a small little ceremony at the beginning of it last month and that was to honor our veterans. And I was going to speak under Commissioner comments later. And, you know, I have to acknowledge that our social media has been very active regarding the post on pride. And it is because all members of our community is what this board and this organization want to recognize, that you all belong and that you are seen and your contributions matter. So back to the Veterans Memorial, I did go back because there was a lot of chatter in the comments about why don't we honor our veterans and we do honor our veterans. And the sad thing is, is that 30 fold, the comments from pride outweighed any of the veterans posts that we made online. And out of the 33 people that commented and or liked our post online, I probably knew more than half of them, which means that they were either related to this, to Adams County as employees or they were people I knew in community. And I have attended the ceremony that we hold on that Friday for Memorial Day in honor of our veterans at our fairly new Veterans Memorial, the USS Colorado, which is on Mann nine Holt Lake out at the Riverdale Regional Park. And less than a handful of public is ever there to attend. The people that attend are members of our Veterans Advisory Commission, staff members, our employees that are veterans and or supporting the park system. Our Board of County Commissioners have attended. And so looking at pride and thank you, Lindsay, for your remarks, is that we all should live. And if this is not your choice, maybe veterans is not your choice and you don't want to honor veterans, but maybe you do. Maybe pride is not a celebration for you, but maybe it is. And with that, and with that spirit of maybe it is, that you come out and celebrate. Whether you celebrate our veterans, whether you celebrate Juneteenth, you celebrate pride, you celebrate our LGBT community here in Adams County and our employees. Because I tell you what, when Kathy Commissioner Henson talks about the tapestry of Adams County and our employees, we make better policy as a board because we have voices of diversity and we have respect for one another as individuals. And at the end of the day, everyone's voice matters, especially on this commission and especially for our executive leadership team that Lindsay's part of. For our staff members here in Adams County is that all of you matter and you matter so much to this board and to this community that we do extend benefits, health and medical, so you feel safe, so that you feel covered, so you're not going without. And so at the end of the day, when you are comfortable and you're safe, that you performed the best that you can to serve the members of this community of Adams County. So with that, I'm going to conclude my remarks. I invite everyone to go to pride. I want to thank our park staff, staff at large across many departments, across many offices that make this event possible. So thank you. Thank you for being here. So we'll start with pride and then we'll go to Juneteenth. So anyone, Lindsay, please join us in the front. Any employee that's here that would like to join us for pride or Juneteenth, you're welcome to join us. So we'll start with pride first.
All right, on three guys, one, two, three.
Okay, we're on to the agenda under public comments. Eric, do you have anyone sign up for public comment?
We do have one person signed up this morning, Sean Flanagan.
Okay. Come on down and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, good morning and thank you for having me today. My name is Sean Flanagan. I represent a client that owns property within your county, 5671 Tejon Street. I'm here today as representative on behalf of my client to ask a simple question. We have been navigating a process and that process is somewhat unclear to me. And so I'm attempting to understand just very generically and basic, what does expedited mean to the county commissioners? Does that mean it's a one month time period? Does that mean it's a one year time period? What does expedited mean? And I say that because in discussions with the planning staff throughout this process so far, I have been given multiple different timeframes, some of which appear to be open ended and with no timeframe connected to them specifically. We're currently in our fourth application and I'm attempting to understand the process so that we can navigate appropriately and get through it. And that's my question. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for being here, Sean. So under public comment is the opportunity for the public to come and make comment to the board. Following this section of public comment, there'll be elected official communication. And at that time, we can respond to your question. I would like to point to staff that could be present from CED, Jen. Oh, Chase is back in the lobby, the gentleman back in the lobby. I appreciate you being here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Look forward to your response.
Yes. Eric, had you have anyone else signed up for public comment?
That was everyone.
That was everyone. Okay, now we're on to elected official communication.
Should we ask if there's anyone who didn't sign up?
Yes. I think I recognize a lot of people.
I know.
Anyone here today that did not sign up for public comment that would like to comment at this time? I don't see anyone.
Good call, Chair. Thank you.
Great. All right, elected official communication.
Yes. In addition to a full proclamation agenda this morning, I also want to take a moment to honor and thank Dave Fraser for staying with us in Adams County for almost a year as our interim county manager. Dave has decades of experience and came out of retirement to help us be an interim while we searched for a permanent county manager. And I just want to pause and say thank you, Dave, for your many months of service, your many urgent phone calls from Commissioners to help us parse out and solve problems and the expertise that you have given to our organization, to our community and to our staff to make sure that we are in good hands and well managed during this lengthy interim period. And I just want to thank you for your service, Mr. Fraser, and wish you well. I hope you go back to retirement. I don't know if your wife's going to kick you out of the house again and make you go back to work, but that's entirely you and your household. But I wish you very well and I thank you for lending us your decades of experience here in Adams County.
Yes, I concur. Commissioner Henson?
Thank you. Yes, on that note, I'll pick up where Commissioner Pinter left off. Thank you, Dave. You will always be the first county manager I ever worked with as a Commissioner. So, you know, dubious honor. You and Lindsay met me in the lobby on my first day of onboarding back in January, which sometimes seems like yesterday and sometimes seems like a year ago. I thank you. It's been a pleasure getting to know you and learning the ropes of my job with your, as Emma said, your decades of experience at the helm. Thank you very much. It has been a pleasure and please come back and visit us. Take care. All the best to you. And did you want to comment something to me?
No, go ahead.
Yeah. Thank you. One more thing before I toss it to the chair. I just, there's a lot going on in the national news. One thing that's on my mind as a, my kids are 18 and 20, but I remember the days of their annual doctor visits, their well checks, they still have, you know, and now they're home from college. I'm like, do you have to go to the eye doctor? You need to do this, you need to do this before you go back to college. There's a lot of, there are a lot of stories in the news about the health guidance, people who are at the helm of the CDC and so on and so forth. Our Adams County Health Department does tremendous work. They are independent from the board, so I want to just say that. But I, we, because of the previous board's work, our health department follows the social determinants of health. And I feel that we are in very good hands with experts across our health department. And we will be leaning on them for guidance in the coming months as things feel to me unsettled when I listen to the news and it's hard to know. And I just wanted to say that we here in Adams County, as I said, even though the health department is independent of us, I have a lot of confidence in them and we will be leaning on them for guidance in the coming months and possibly years because the health of the people of our county is so, it's just, it's everything in how you enjoy your life and your family and pursue your work and build, buy your home and make a home for yourself here in Adams County. So I just wanted to mention that. I think I'll leave it there for today. Just know that we are also, as I've mentioned previously, tracking the federal budget, which will be impacting our Human Services Department. We still don't know exactly how, but our team has been doing a lot of contingency planning. And when the final document is done, we are ready to pivot and take whatever action we need to do the very best that we can to provide services to all residents in Adams County who need them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner. I want to start with Dave. So Dave's been with us like nine months total. Dave's hidden talent is that he does have a boxer arena voice and introduces people very unexpectedly. Did not know you had that talent. You know, my first encounter with Dave, which really wasn't an encounter, is that his very first, not even your first day of work, but the weekend before your Monday that you started was the county's Festival Latino. And I invited, extended invite for Dave to please join us for the Festival Latino. And as I was leaving, Dave came and brought the storms with him, I think is what happened. But I really appreciate that you jumped in with both feet and that you were able to meet with our delegation, the Mexican consulate, that you welcomed him to the Riverdale Regional Park for that special event for community and for our park staff. I just really appreciate that. And you have, you've shown that throughout. And the one thing that I do hear from our employees about you is that your friendliness and how personable you are and asking people if they don't know you, that you go and introduce yourself. And that means a lot to people when they are seen. And when someone asks you, how's your day? And it's not like, hey, how's your day? How's your weekend? But really ask like, how's your day going? And I think that that, I believe leadership comes, it has perfect timing, even though in really tumultuous times that we see at times. But I think that your leadership was needed to really boost the morale here at Adams County and to really make sure that the employees are seen at a time when it felt abrupt when our previous county manager left. So I just want to thank you, Dave. I want to just give a shout out. So last week, we have been really busy as a board. We're at the Colorado Counties Conference. But one thing I do want to mention, at least my time here with Adams County, it could be in the history of Adams County, I don't have confirmation of that, is that we broke ground on our first, my first as a Commissioner Fortune 50 company, which was really outstanding. They are the second tenant at the Rocky Mountain Rail Park, which is in Watkins. A very innovative park. They sell, they have available, not sell, they have available 40 acre, I believe it's 40 acre lots. It's turnkey, so as they have a spur off the rail line and then they go into the rail park. And so they're very close to the railroad, which nobody's close to. And so they're very close to the railroad, which nobody's close to the railroad. I will just tell you that for many years of experience. Um, so we, I want to welcome Archer Daniels Midland, uh, to Adams County. It's very, in a very exciting time for us. If you don't know Archel Daniels Midland, they are a sweetener company. So they have very big clients. Frito Lay is one of their clients. They will have a trucking, uh, rail business out of the Rocky Mountain Rail Park. And so it was really exciting. And thanks to our park staff, CED, um, administration that was there to celebrate the Arch of Daniels Midland groundbreaking. And of course, our Colorado Air and Spaceport people. So I have to tell you a quick story. As, it's really, um, it's a joy to be invited to go drive on the tarmac at the Colorado Air and Spaceport. So we're, we're owner-operators of that. So it was a big deal. You get to drive your car out on the tarmac. And then as you make the corner and you head towards the hangar because the weather's was questionable, is that they guided you in with the airplane wands. So, you know, the wands, I don't know if they do that still. Um, I know, I see you, William, you're back there laughing at me. Cause I even said in my speech, I was like, you know, I thought being county commissioner was like the top of my bucket list, but I really think that I at heart am probably, um, an Airbus pilot. I think that's my next thing that I'm going to try. Um, it was just really special. And I tell you what, the, the entire teams of many, many presidents that joined Archer, um, ADM that day felt how special that was. Uh, it was so unique. We went under a big tent as you went into the hangar. Um, they had planes on display. So it was just a really fantastic welcoming to Adams County. So thank you to, I see William. Um, so thank you for the CAS, uh, Colorado Air and Spaceport staff in parks for putting that together. Um, with that, that's it for elected official communication. We're going to go to the consent calendar. Um, I do want to recognize the gentleman that came to talk under Sean public comment. Um, and, and that has been a discussion of the board. So upon Dave's departure, he's our interim county manager, the board, um, has a finalist for a county manager. And we have two brand-new county commissioners. We have Commissioner Kathy Henson, Commissioner Julie Duran-Molika, who's out today, um, that are really looking at what service delivery looks like to community and business. Um, and you bring up a really good point of what does expeditious mean? So we'll look into that for you. Um, there are staff members here that may also, uh, talk with you on your way out. So thank you. Um, I saw Chase. If you can leave your contact information, either with, there's Chase. Yeah, Chase is at the top of the stairs. That'd be great. We can keep in touch with you. Thank you so much, Sean. Okay, with that, moving on to item number seven, which is the consent calendar.
Thank you, Chair. I move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
And the consent calendar passes three, uh, three with two absent. And then we're on to new business, county manager.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Your first and only ma- uh, item of new business is a resolution approving a task order between Adams County and Kimley Horn and Associates in the amount of five hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for design services for the fuel farm improvement project at the Colorado Air and Spaceport. Here to present this, I think he knows he is, is the Deputy Director of CASP, the aforementioned Will Flowers.
Good morning, uh, Commissioners. I'm William Flowers, Deputy Director of Colorado Air and Spaceport. And I'm here today to ask for approval for the, uh, resolution to approve the task order for Kimley Horn for our field farm design work in the amount of five hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety. So just for a little background for the field farm, the field farm was installed in nineteen eighty-five. It consists of three underground, um, fuel storage tanks. Two of them being fifteen thousand gallon jet eight tanks, one being a twenty thousand gallon af gas, a hundred low lead tank. Both these tanks are near the end of their service life and need to be replaced to maintain safe and efficient fuel operations at CASP. To address what we are looking to, to address this problem, what we're looking to do is move forward with replacing the existing underground fuel storage tanks with modern above-ground storage tanks, which will include two fifteen thousand gallon above-ground jet eight tanks, one twenty thousand gallon above-ground a hundred low lead tank af gas, and one twelve thousand gallon above-ground af gas unleaded tank. This will include also the asphalt and concrete paths to support some of the infrastructure with this project. So this project will be supported by our recently passed, um, CDI grants that was passed in public hearing on March fifth. One grant being a ninety-ten match in the amount of a hundred and three thousand dollars. And then another grant, which is a fifty-fifty match, in the amount of five hundred eighty-five thousand dollars. This project is one of the first of many for airports across the state of Colorado in which grants, this grant is from the recent House bill passed, uh, last year and signed by Governor Pol- Polis, House Bill twelve thirty-four to support the aviation communities' transition to unleaded af gas and reduce enmo- environmental impact. So we asking, we're asking for approval for this task order with Kimley Horn to do the design work in the amount of five hundred twenty-three thousand dollars, eight hundred and ninety. And that is it. So any questions?
Great. Thank you, Will. Commissioner Henson.
Thank you. Thanks for the presentation. I, my question is, can you please talk about, um, how that these tanks are not going to be above ground as opposed to the older tanks that are below ground about? I, I don't know. I'm assuming they, they, they were put underground previously for safety reasons or for aesthetics. Um, so I'm just kind of, if you can please, just for the public and, and also for myself, explain why we're going back to above-ground, uh, tanks.
Well, from an environmental impact above ground, so it's two sides to it. The above ground is obviously a, uh, more safety environmental impact as far as you could actually see visible leaks that occur within the tanks. Another reason also is, uh, just to come back to some of the, uh, current, uh, insurance policies we have with our external insurance provider. Um, if we were not able to have these above-ground tanks installed, then the county will have to have, have these underground tanks self-insured. So that's another reason to this. But also too, uh, we're also trying to tag along with the actual current, uh, CDOT, uh, grant and also, uh, moving forward with the envi- the industry standard with having unleaded fuel, um, at, uh, Colorado airports. So that's another thing that the, that the state is trying to push. And I think they're trying to, uh, have all state airports by twenty-thirty to be able to supply, um, uh, unleaded af gas to all the general aviation community.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. I have a quick question. So Colorado Air and Spaceport has been the topic of conversation lately and we put a lot of investment in that. So does this expand, um, what we currently have? Do these tanks expand the service as we move forward? Or is there an opportunity on the pad site to expand?
Um, I'll leave, I'll ask my engineer to come up.
Okay. Thank you, Will.
My name's Casey Adamson with Kimley Horn. Thank you for having me and thank you for your question. As far as the service available, it's basically taking the GA community, our small aircraft community, and providing more opportunity, a more clean opportunity for our GA community to use an un- unleaded option. And so this provides an alternative as far as, uh, we're expanding the service of adding a twelve thousand, uh, gallon tank in that aspect. Uh, but as far as, um, the space that is provided for the fuel farm, we're adding to the already provided space for, uh, where the tanks are located. Um, I'm not sure, am I answering your question or?
As we look into the future, um, we've signed with Altitude X, hopefully expand our service and our base, um, both as a regional or aviation, general aviation airport, um, as well as into the future of, does the capacity, is there enough room on the site for capacity or are we adding capacity with this purchase?
Well, as of right now, no, we're, we're staying at the current capacity. Uh, with our current, uh, fuel tanks right now, we have not hit those marks yet. So we still have a lot of room to grow with the increase in service.
Fantastic. That's what I needed to know. Thank you. Um, I think the public would be surprised. You have the numbers of how many uh, takeoffs and landings that we have. I think you're over a hundred thousand.
Yes, if I'm not mistaken, last year we, uh, hit the mark of a hundred twenty-six thousand, uh, for the year. And we're expected to go up with the ten crease in, um, operations per year based off these numbers from our air traffic control tower.
Great. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here. So with that, any further questions? Nothing from Commissioner Pinter. So I'll make a motion, very rarely make a motion, um, to approve the task order between Adams County and Kim- Kimley Horn Associates in the amount of five hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for design services for the fuel farm improvement project at the Colorado Air and Spaceport. And thank you for pursuing those CDOT grants.
Thank you.
I'll second.
And the motion passes three to zero with two absent. Okay. County attorney.
Uh, no new business today.
No new business today. Um, land use, do you need a minute to set up? You do? Okay, so the time is ten eighteen. Let's take about seven minutes. We'll be back at you want to do ten thirty? Ten twenty-five. Let's do this. Okay, the time is ten twenty-six AM and we're going to start the land use hearing cases. So at this time.
I'm Ella. Good morning. My name is Ella Gleason. I'm a planner with the Community and Economic Development Department. And the case before you is PLN twenty-twenty-five dash two Legislative Alignment Twenty-Twenty-Five Text Amendments. The request is for text amendments to amend the development standards and regulations to comply with state statutes related to accessory dwelling units, parking minimums, substance abuse disorders, recovery land uses, and residential occupancy limits. So as you all are well aware, uh, twenty-twenty-four was a busy year for land use legislation at the state. And these, uh, text amendments, the purpose of these will be to implement four of these acts that were passed in twenty-twenty-four. As you can see, two of them are already in effect and two of them, the deadline is rapidly approaching at the end of the month. So we'll get into each of them, um, individually here. First of all, I just wanted to touch on, uh, the impetus for both the Substance Use Recovery Use, uh, Act and the definition of family change. The impetus for these were, uh, the Fair Housing Act, which is a federal law that prohibits discrimination by direct providers of housing for a number of characteristics, including familial status and disability. So first off, uh State Bill twenty-four dash forty-eight Substance Use Recovered Substance Use Disorders Recovery Act um was largely not a land use bill, but there were a couple of things that we do need to adopt in order to be compliant. The first was a new definition for recovery residence. Uh so this will be found in Chapter eleven of our development standards, and it will refer back to the state code's uh definition of recovery residence. So this will be the umbrella term underneath us. We will have two new uses, both a group home and a group residential facility. Um so the group home will be for those populations protected under the Fair Housing Act. Group residential facility will be for those who are not protected currently under this act. Uh for example, uh domestic violence shelters and transitional housing facilities are not protected currently. And then each of these will be divided further by size. Um so both a small group home or group residential facility will be eight or fewer residents, large would be nine or more. In the use table, we've gotten rid of the uh previous uses and definitions for group homes serving different different populations, and so now we'll just have these four uses. As you can see, the group homes that um again are for populations protected under the Fair Housing Act. Small group homes are allowed anywhere a single-family home is permitted, and then large, we treated more as multifamily. Um so those are permitted in the R three and R four zone districts. Group residential facilities uh will have a greater level of discretion, and they will only be permitted by conditional use permit. Next, we have House Bill twenty-four dash one zero zero seven Residential Occupancy Limits. Uh practically, this just required us to edit our definition of family. Um so previously, it did not include individuals not related by blood or marriage, and so this is just updating that definition to modernize it, to um include a larger group of people, be more inclusive. It's important to note that safety and building codes still apply, so we will still be regulating the number of people within a home. We just won't care how they're related. Next, uh House Bill twenty-four dash one three oh four Eliminating Minimum Parking Requirements. I would imagine you all are familiar with this. Um but it states that the county cannot require minimum parking spaces for most new multifamily projects near applicable transit service areas. Uh so we currently do require parking minimums for multifamily housing um under this, these new text amendments. Within an applicable transit service area, which I'll show the map in a moment, uh the county shall not require parking for multifamily residential developments. Adaptive reuse for residential, so this is taking an existing building and rehabbing it into a residential use. Uh adaptive reuse for mixed use, where at least fifty percent of the use is residential, would also apply. Um we may require parking for affordable housing projects for over twenty units if certain conditions are met. And then um just important to note, a developer could provide parking if they choose to. Uh we would just not be allowed to require it in these locations, but they could provide it at their own will. This is the map that has been provided by the state. Uh so as you can see, hopefully, um it only applies to the southwestern portion of the county, so as north as one twentieth over to the Aravata Boundary at Sheridan, and then into Commerce City Aurora over by the airport. This map, they included both bus lines and rail lines. Lastly, House Bill twenty-four dash one one five two Regarding Accessory Dwelling Units. Um this is the only one that we opted into, so we will be a uh supportive jurisdiction rather than a subject jurisdiction. Uh we chose to opt in in order to access grants and financial opportunities related to housing. And truly, our regulations were uh nearly in line with the guidance, and so it uh we just had to make a few changes to our existing regulations. Um to be compliant, we are required to permit one ADU accessory to any single-family detached unit. We already do that. Uh must use an administrative process. We do this as well. Uh cannot require parking or owner occupancy. We do not require owner occupancy. We were requiring off-street parking. Uh the new language, uh if on-street parking is available, then uh we cannot require that parking. If on-street parking is not available, then they will have to provide off-street parking spaces. And then allowing certain ADU sizes and setbacks and not restricting through design or dimensional standards. This is where we had to make a few changes that we'll get into. Okay, so currently, we do not allow mobile or manufactured homes as ADUs. Um with these new text amendments, we would allow for manufactured homes or modular construction for an ADU if placed on a permanent foundation and connected to metered utility services. So this would exclude RVs and motorhomes. Building size, uh currently for an attached ADU, so this is either a basement unit or one that's attached to the existing home. Uh cannot exceed forty percent of the principal dwelling unit's residential area. For a detached unit, same calculation applies. However, we cap it at fifteen hundred square feet to maintain a scale within the neighborhood um to neighboring uh single-family homes. The state requires uh under these new, this new uh act and for these text amendments, that we allow for a an ADU of at least seven hundred and fifty square feet. We have to permit an ADU between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty square feet in size. So the calculations will be similar. We'll start with that forty percent of the principal dwelling unit's area. If this is below seven hundred and fifty square feet, that applicant is still entitled to that seven hundred and fifty square feet. So we'll start with that forty percent number. If it were to be less than that, um they're legally entitled to seven hundred and fifty square feet. Hopefully, that makes sense. Detached, same calculation. However, we're still capping it at that fifteen hundred square feet for the same reason of maintaining scale. So when evaluating text amendments, the criteria for approval are as follows. The text amendment is consistent with the Adams County Comprehensive Plan. The text amendment is consistent with the purpose of these standards and regulations, and the text amendment will not be detrimental to the majority of persons or property in the surrounding areas, nor to the community in general. Staff did notify all referral agencies in our system as we do with countywide text amendments. So this includes cities, citizen groups, HOAs, counties, uh federal agencies, fire districts. We received no comments in opposition. Um we also post the land use information publicly for the public to review. Uh we did receive one public comment in opposition concerned about increasing densities from the new ADU allowances. We also uh created a public input page using our engagement software and hosted an online forum for community to come and ask staff questions. Um we did this on April fifteenth. So staff does find that these text amendments are consistent with our comprehensive plan, development standards and regulations. It will not be detrimental to the surrounding area. I think in the spirit of inclusive inclusivity, as we've been talking about this morning, staff does feel like um these text amendments will move us further in that direction of being a more inclusive county, uh of attaining our housing goals. And will overall be um provide a positive impact to the community. We did present these text amendments to the Planning Commission on May eighth. Uh they recommended approval with three findings of fact and one condition. They asked questions regarding um optional parking and dimensional standards for ADUs. Two members of the public were in attendance, and uh specifically around the ADUs, they were concerned about water and additional density. Um but staff does recommend approval of the text amendment PLN twenty twenty-five dash two with three findings of fact and one condition. Here are the findings of fact. Um and one condition, that staff in consultation with the county attorney's office may make minor corrections to these text amendments to correct any errors or incorrect cross references, so long as any corrections do not alter the substance of meaning or the amendments. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available for questions.
Great, thank you so much, Ella. So questions from the board at this time for staff?
I have a few.
Yes, Commissioner Hansen.
Thank you. So can you please go back to the chart um showing the uh residential facility, use facility or resident, I can't, I'm sorry. Category, this one, yes. So the, so group residential facility, both large and small. I- am I reading this correctly? They are not, that they are only allowed by conditional use in R three and R four and C zero and C one?
Correct.
So they're not, so they're not allowed in A one through R two. That, is that what that line means that they're not, they're not even allowed?
Correct.
Okay, and those are the, and those are not protected by the FHAA.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And then, so in large group homes. Okay, I see are also not permitted through A one through R two. Okay, that's small. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. And then I also had another question on ADUs um about the minimum and maximum. So, yeah, thank you. So building size over, under proposed DSR text, so if I'm understanding, if it's attached, it, the minimum size, it it, it has to be seven hundred and fifty, or it can be less if the applicant, if the applicant only wants to build a five hundred square foot ADU that's attached, that's allowable?
Correct.
Okay, but they can say, or they can say, oh, but you have to give me seven hundred and fifty square feet be- because that's what the state law minimum is.
Correct. We must require between five hundred and seven hundred and fifty square feet.
Okay, thank you. And then, let's see, and then under detached a fifteen hundred square foot, that would be the maximum for a detached ADU?
Sorry, fifteen hundred square feet?
Yeah, fifteen, yeah, okay. And then, and again, the smallest, so it couldn't be a teeny tiny house. It would be a minimum, have to be at least five hundred square feet.
Correct.
Okay, I just, okay, thank you. Um that's what I thought I read, and then you were going at a good clip, which is great. We appreciate that, but I just wanted to make sure that I uh understood those numbers. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Pinter?
Um I do understand we want to be efficient with our time, but I did have a follow-up question at the uh minimum threshold at the five hundred square feet. I, I myself would not choose to live in a three hundred square foot unit, but um the internet abounds with examples of people who try and endeavor to do so for cost efficiency, space efficiency. Is there a reason why five hundred square feet was identified as the minimum size?
So I would, excuse me, I would, uh, so Chase Evans, W Director for CED. Uh so I would agree with you. Um I will say that there is actually, there is a hard minimum of four hundred square feet per building code. The five hundred square feet, I would say, was based on uh what was believed to be a reasonable minimum for uh consideration for a kind of a healthy healthy habitat for someone to to live in. Um there was not anything more detailed than that. Um uh but four hundred square feet would be the absolute minimum per building code requirement.
So I'm, I think for me, I don't understand, like I, I defer to my colleagues, and I know that like we have a package before us, and we have been going back and forth on this. Um I uh must apologize that I did not clock the five hundred square feet minimum in our previous conversations due to other substantive extensive policy conversations. Um so I don't, I, I just would defer to my colleagues. Does, it's, it's not for me, the five hundred square foot unit, but if somebody were really attempting to be economical with their space and their cost, maybe the four hundred would be better if that's our absolute uh floor. But I would defer to my colleagues, and that is something we could also address later. I just sort of put it out there for conversation in this discussion format.
Uh yes, I'll start, and then we can go around. So my understanding is, and correct me if I'm wrong, please, to staff, is that it has to be metered and or probably well in our case, or maybe in some cases in um Eastern Adams County, there are well water. Um I don't know what is economical, because the charge to get a tap, there has to be some as a land, you know, if you're a landlord or you're a developer, you own the property. I don't know as far as rent yields, what you can get back on your investment. That'd be my only question. So I understand that the floor is four hundred. We're asking for five hundred. Um
this is not a hill I'm willing to die on. I'm just trying to open the conversation, because I apologize, because we had more substantive and extensive conversations over the past year, and just and now looking at the, the final product, um Chase is probably gonna, you know, curse me in the elevator on the way up, why are you bringing this up now? Um but uh just open for conversation to get some understanding on the five hundred square feet.
So let me ask another, another questions. Are they limited in the number of accessory dwelling units that they have on a property? They are.
They're limited to one.
Just to one. Okay, that helps.
And if, if I could add maybe just one point to clarify, so the, the, the legislation um dictates that the uh local jurisdiction or the supportive jurisdiction may not restrict uh the construction of an ADU that is between five hundred and seven fifty. So the state basically has stipulated either required for a subject jurisdiction or or optional if we were to opt in as a, as a uh supportive jurisdiction. Um that's really where the five hundred came from. The building code was a separate requirement, and that is really setting the, the, the minimum from a building permit perspective. Um we went with what that lower number was, because that was what the state had essentially recommended. Um I'll be honest, I don't know of a situation where we've had a building permit uh for ADUs smaller than five hundred, where we've definitely seen them is based on the forty percent. Um so say you have a thousand square foot primary structure, forty percent of that would only be four hundred. What we have seen is a lot of uh applicants that are saying, hey, I would love to build six hundred. How do I do that? Unfortunately, with our current process, that would only be done through a variance process. Um this will alleviate that where someone that may be wanting to, you know, we, we talk about a lot of different situations, but say somewhere where uh you know, the kids take the primary home or something, and then you have um the parents move into a separate structure, which is an actual case we have. Uh I've had some conversations with recently. They, they have had a similar conversation to say, for, you know, whatever their exact situation was, four hundred, five hundred square feet was a little bit too small, but seven fifty would be perfect for what their needs are. So I think the seven fifty is a, is a great addition to solve problems we've had. I don't know that whether it's four hundred or five hundred. Not saying it doesn't matter, but I haven't seen a lot of um applications that are in that kind of split, and the difference between four to five hundred square feet.
That makes sense. Commissioner Pinter? That actually works for me, and then also there's a variance process. If somebody really were, were like, diehard, like this is my number, they could come to you. It might be lengthier because it's a variance, but there would be an outlet for that. And um if we were seeing several of those, we could have a future conversation. Uh so I'm good. I, I, unless someone else has an appetite, I withdraw my question, and I'm, I'm good.
Yep, I'm good. No other questions?
And again, I wish you good luck if you're living in four or five hundred square feet, and good deodorant, and a shower.
Do they, the state, love the state. Do they have any um occupant occupancy capacity on any of these dwelling units?
Uh the state won't dictate that, but the building code will certainly dictate.
Dictate everything else, it's okay. Okay, I have no questions. I, I do want to thank um our staff, particularly Ben, for heading up a lot of this. Um it's been very active down at the state, and I feel really proud that this is um for our smaller neighbor, you know, our neighboring, we just came from Colorado County's conference, um are really struggling on how to implement this. They're just not as deep in staff and skill and knowledge. Um and so I just feel very fortunate that we're in a position to adopt this and move on, because it's not the case across Colorado. So that's all I have.
Okay, well, then I will make a motion to approve the text amendment, uh PLN two twenty-five dash two with three findings of fact and one condition. With my thanks to staff.
Great, thank you. Do I need to do public comment? I think I know everyone, but part of, of the process?
I, I think we probably should ask to make sure, yeah, thank you.
I apologize for jumping the gun.
So after questions from the board, um it is time for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience that would like to uh come up to the podium and speak for public comment, I think most of the people here are employees.
So even I can see that without my glasses, like before there were enough people.
I know, you just, you know, the audi, I don't think people on YouTube can see this. Um there is no applicant. We are, we oversee this process. Uh so thank you, Commissioner, for your motion.
I will second.
And the motion passes three zero with two absent. So thank you again to staff. So with no additional items on our agenda this morning, we are adjourned at ten forty-seven AM.